Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here. Item number two is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Item four A on the agenda is coming off. With that change, I move we adopt the agenda as amended.
I have a motion and second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Aye.
All ayes? Item three is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We approve the consent agenda as published for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
A motion and second to approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Item four A was vacated, so we'll move to item four B, which is under the mayor's office, Resolution nineteen dash twenty-one fifty-five. In front of you is a resolution reappointing Ryan Lancaster and appointing Tom Leclerc, who is here with us today, to the Meridian Transportation Commission. I know that you're familiar with Ryan, and he has been a dependable commissioner, and we appreciate his interest to continue to serve. New in front of you is Tom Leclerc, but for some of you, you probably not remember Tom. He served on our Parks Commission, and he's also served Ada County on their planning and zoning. We appreciate his interest in the Meridian Transportation Commission. And I think Mr. Ballard and I have already finagled him to agree to help on a new project we're kind of endeavoring in. So Tom has tackled some meaty issues when he was with the Parks Commission, so we're just really excited to have him interested in the transportation world. So council, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
No questions. My opinion, a great reappointment and a great appointment to the Transportation Commission. So I'd move that we adopt Resolution nineteen dash two-one-five-five, appointing Ryan Lancaster and Tom Leclerc to the Meridian Transportation Commission.
I have a motion and second to approve item four B. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
He's in a dead zone.
Okay, Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
The ayes have it. I'm not sure how to count Mr. Burnt, but yeah, blank. Tom, would you like to make any remark? Hey, come on up to the podium, yeah?
Come on down.
Thank you for showing confidence in me, and I'll work hard on this commission. It's, uh, the mayor talked about some of my experiences. I look forward to coming back to the city and re-engaging with our community, and it's going to be really great to be on the Transportation Commission.
Well, welcome back.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, item five B, under Community Items Presentations, yes? Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to say? Yes, I see you brought a guest.
So you guys ought to be careful giving, who you give an open mic to. Thank you for reappointing me. So I've been a commissioner on the, first, the Traffic Safety Commission, and now the Transportation Commission for, I guess this is eight years now. So thank you for reappointing me for nine, ten, and eleven. So this is my daughter, Edith. She's one, and she gets to, she gets to tag along on our commission meetings every now and again with mom and big brothers. So it's fun for me to be able to bring my education and experience to the Transportation Commission. You know, by profession, I'm a traffic engineer, and so this is fun for me. I do this on my own time, on my, you know, I take time off for this, so it's a pleasure to serve our community, and I appreciate you reappointing me. So thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you for your service. Your contributions have been greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, five A is under Community Presentations, and I see that we have HR here and Josh here and Phil here. I don't know who I'm turning this over to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Josh is going to do the presentation for the committee. You do have the presentation in front of you in the smallest font I could possibly find, but it is in your packet, so it is on your screen as well in a much more readable form, so.
Okay, thank you, and welcome back, Josh.
Thank you. Josh Everts, three oh three East State Avenue, Old Town Meridian, Meridian eight-three-six-four-two. So thanks for having me back. Per your instruction last time we met, we did get back together as a committee, had some great discussions. I would say that the general sentiment was gratitude from you guys, that it definitely felt like, as we, as I made the last presentation on behalf of the group, we heard you guys loud and clear that it was appropriate for us to go back and revisit this and come with a real recommendation. So that felt very encouraging as a group. Definitely, our spirits were much, much higher. It allowed us to actually look at some market data and come back with something that we think is much more in line with something that we feel good about. So presentation's up there, sweet. I don't see it here. Do I need to, or do I care? Is that all of you?
Moving it.
Am I doing something? I'm advancing it? Okay, it doesn't matter. I wrote it, I should know. Here's the commissioners or the committee members, just an FYI. We did have all of us in there for this discussion, which was really, really great, because there were a couple of times where we didn't have all of us. So everybody got to provide input on this last little bit, so thank them for all of their work on this. Again, a quick recapturing of market data, kind of where we sit right now, as far as how we compensate our mayor and how we compensate our council members. So again, this is more for review. Some of the observations, I won't burden you guys with these again, but we believe that the nature of what city council looked like specifically, we just felt that that was where we had some deficits and we needed to make those things up. And not anybody's fault, but certainly an opportunity to make a correction here so that we're not kicking this can further down the road and having a bigger makeup later on, as well as wanting to encourage participation and be at more of a market rate for our council members. So our adjusted mayoral recommendation is identical to what we made before. So we didn't make any changes here, and kind of as we discussed last time, we felt some market-based adjustments were appropriate. What we've recommended in here is about, and I'm not going to be able to read this either, is it eighteen-twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so eighteen-twenty over in year one. With eighteen-fifty-six in year two, this represents a couple percents increase. We feel that this will keep up with the rest of the market. We feel that those are appropriate recommendations. I do want to emphasize again, though, the thing that we talked about last week, which is that yellow item. We do believe that putting a statute in place that when we make market-based adjustments in wages for all city employees, the city council and the mayor would be included in that. We think that that would provide a mechanism outside of what our committee does every two years to make sure that cost of living is being reflected in compensation for elected officials as well as our city employees. So no changes to that mayoral recommendation. Where we do see a change is when we get to our revised city council recommendation. We felt that we wanted to take this in two parts. We felt that our goal was to target something that's a little bit more in line with the market and the rest of the cities, and just the additional workload that you guys are taking on as city council members. Our recommendation was a thirty-five-hundred dollar increase in two thousand twenty and a fifteen-hundred dollar increase in two thousand twenty-one. The expectation would be that the compensation committee would get back together in two years, look at what the rest of the valley's doing, look at the workload that you guys, we're going to probably tap into Patty again at Meridian Press and encourage her to go do our research for us. In the absence of that, we felt that it was really good data that we'll probably volunteer some more time. If she doesn't do the work for us, then we're going to go do the legwork, because we felt that that was a really, really important thing to have there and have that data as to what's happening in the market in general. Along with, I anticipate that we would probably do some interviews with you guys individually in two years to get an understanding of, A, how many hours are you spending? What's your perception of the value of that time? Is the compensation just that? We'll probably go do that legwork a little bit of ourselves next time around in two years to really assess, you know, are we where we need to be, as well as look at data? And the other cities are really, really great. This is all open, and, you know, they've been asking us for data about what we're going to do, and I think everybody wants to grow the valley and be healthy. So I don't think it'll be difficult to get at that data, but that's our intent as a committee, is that we would go get that research ourselves in two years from now. But our recommendation for right now is that. Again, that yellow item, we feel that that's important for city council as well as the mayor, that when we're doing these kind of adjustments, that they be included in that as well. Lastly, as far as the committee analysis, even with doing this, we maintain a ranking behind Boise after two years as far as mayor goes, and again, we don't know what these other cities are intending to do, but we believe that that mayor position would stay in that position. It does move our city council more in line, moves them closer. Again, we don't know what these cities are going to do, but by the end of that two years, we would feel like it would be close to a number-two position, not that we're trying to keep up with the Joneses, we're trying to keep up with a marketplace, as well as we looked at the breakdown of the hours that we believe you guys were working, which we think averages, you know, probably fifteen hours a week, and we're trying to make sure that the compensation is appropriate for that time. And certainly, you guys are still public servants. Like, this is not a job by any stretch, it's not a living wage, but it is something that we're trying to be fair to compensate that time and make it worthwhile, as well as to attract those new city council members in the future that might want to volunteer and would be willing to give up that fifteen to twenty hours a week in exchange for that be able to have some offsetting income coming in. This is a course correction to adjust for many years of failure to increase. We talked about this the first time, that over twenty years, you guys have accepted pay increases four times. So that environment's what's created where we are today, so it's appropriate to catch those dollars up, do it in a phased kind of approach. We did have Mr. Nary go ahead in the budgeting that's been done in the last, Mr. Nary's at the last week that got submitted, we did make sure that there was a placeholder in there for these dollars, and in anticipation that this is the right thing going forward. And then we'll come back in two years and take a look at this based on what's happening in the market, what's happening with our workload, and making sure that we're doing things that are appropriate. Last slide, the need for a citizens' committee meeting every two years on this topic to gauge communities' perspective and performance of our elected officials. Again, we'll determine the value of the correction recommended two years from now, and we love the fact that we as citizens get to participate in this. It was a very revealing cycle, even though it was my first one. I felt that some of the old inputs, certainly I tried to stir things up a little bit, but everybody was unanimous in that it's, it felt really good to have you guys come back and put us to work one more day. That I would say going into this process, it did feel like a little bit of a beaten-down room, that, you know, hey, we're going to do this work, we're going to submit a recommendation, they're going to deny it. Like, that was literally our attitude, and when we had this makeup meeting, it was very forward-thinking, we were looking at market data, we were excited about the prospect of being able to present something to you, and everybody felt like it was of value. So thank you for doing that. Any questions?
Thank you, Josh. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Josh, if I hear you correct, these recommendations is to take for the council a tiered approach for year one, additional amount year two, and then moving forward, apply a cost of living like we would do for all other employees?
No, cost of living's a separate thing. We believe that that should be something statutory, that you guys would have Mr. Nary's office write that up and vote on that as a separate thing, that just when we do cost of living adjustments for city employees, that we, that absent our committee, that those would just be cost of living adjustments that you guys would benefit from. The committee, our responsibility then is looking at more of a bigger picture. We actually talked about this today, that we anticipate that the adjustments that we'd be making in the future might be little to nothing, that by making this correction and with including statutes for cost of living, we might see that the compensation just is right in line with the rest of the valley and what's going on. What we would be responsible for is doing the due diligence to look at what's happening in the valley, in other cities, as well as to interview you guys and look at what your workload is and what you guys are really, you know, what does the job look like, and then make an assessment that do we need to do anything additional, or do we need to take away? I think the committee can recommend both, right? If we feel like the workload decreased, or we've made some adjustments, or we feel like it's not as big a demand, or we see some, you know, it would be appropriate for us to come back and go, hey, we think a, you know, an adjustment down would be appropriate. We certainly, as a committee, are fine with that as well. We all run businesses and sometimes have to make cuts, so, but it would just be our job to look at a bigger-picture kind of view, and we believe that this kind of gets us back to a market rate for the work that you guys are providing.
Madam Mayor. Josh, when you were here last time, we talked about, again, that tiered approach, and it sounded like the committee had recommended that, because they thought it was a way that the council would accept kind of an increase. I'm curious, is that the same rationalization behind, by the tiered approach for council again as well?
No, I'll be transparent. So originally, there was a thought that, look, why don't we just catch up to five thousand in year one? We were concerned about setting a precedent of a big catch-up and then a zero year, and that would we somehow set a standard in the future of doing, you know, kind of a, you know, a big amount with then a zero year. So we felt like it would be appropriate to take this in a tiered approach. Also, it's an election year. We felt like making sure that that first year, you know, is, it's a thirty-five percent increase in your compensations. So it's a big number. Like, when you express it as a percentage, it feels, it feels big. When you talk about it in dollars in comparison to what's happening in the market, it's not at all. It's completely appropriate. So we wanted to make sure that we took sort of a graduate approach, because we felt that that was the best for the city, we felt it was the best for you guys, and it got us on a path to be healthy two years from now.
Thanks, Tom.
Any other questions?
And actually, Mr. Nary, is that a fair representation of our, okay. I've been known to make things up, so I just want to, my fact-checker here. Never in front of this body.
Counsel? So next steps is we need direction from council on if you want to approve the recommendation from the committee. And thank you, Josh, and certainly thank you to the entire committee.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
A thought. Appreciate the committee bringing this back. I, for one, would like some time to, I guess, marinate on this. It is a large increase, and typically, any increase I've not been really warmed to, but I really appreciate the feedback that we heard from the committee. I think, and this is something that I guess I'd like to float out there to get council's feedback on, because the proposed increase to council compensation is so high, I guess I believe both in terms of dollars and percentage, I'd like to maybe have a public hearing on this and let the public the opportunity to come in and weigh in. Again, it's their dollars. I, for one, would like time to marinate, to hear from the public before I would want to render a decision. Piece two that I'm struggling with is the tiered approach, too, is to, we're making a decision, this body's going to make a decision that will impact a future council financially, and I'd rather it either just be one number now, or a number now, and the council could look to make that decision a year from now if they would want to take that secondary increase. So those are some of my thoughts. I really do appreciate the work of the committee, and I think that, made compelling arguments three weeks ago when you were here about the importance for providing appropriate compensation, not just for this council, but for the councils in the future.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Trigg.
I'd like to take a second to thank Mr. Everts and this committee, the committee for taking the time to reevaluate this. My thoughts haven't changed since we spoke last in regard to this. I think it's important going forward that we have the talent necessary in order to have people on council that are good decision-makers, who have the time and the resources available to be great leaders in our city. And so we ask Mr. Everts to go back and take more time with this. I'm in, I'm in agreement with Mr. Everts and his committee, I'm very supportive of it. So unlike Mr. Cavanagh, I like to move on this and vote on this this evening and come to a resolution, whether it be yea or nay, and get the ball rolling. So that would be my recommendation. And again, I appreciate Mr. Everts and the committee for the time they've taken to evaluate this and for their dedication to the city. So thank you so much, Josh, and committee.
Thank you, Mr. Burnt. Other comments from council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I'm kind of pondering what Councilman Burnt said and also Councilman Cavanagh. Thinking about if we wait, I don't think I would feel any different. I really appreciate the committee going back and kind of the committees' change in how they felt about doing it, that it gave them some enthusiasm to think that we were on board with what they would come back with. So I support that we accept the committee's recommendation. I think they've done a lot of work, many of them over many years, and we have a recommendation for a reason. We trust our citizens' committee, although I'm not completely opposed to having a hearing. So, but I do think that the, I would not have a problem with moving on tonight and accepting the recommendation as well. Because it's been on the agenda, people could be here if they had chosen to.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Josh came to us last time with a smaller number, and we unanimously asked him to go back and give us a real number, and that's what he did. And I am, I would like to see once in the six years I've been sitting here, for us to listen to our citizen committees and actually do what they recommend. So I'm in favor of taking the recommendation and truly appreciate all of the hard work that has gone into this and extra work on top of the regular job by going back and reevaluating to bring us the real number that it did. So I'm in agreement with the numbers that Josh has brought forward tonight. I might have to reconsider my thoughts of not running. Just kidding on that last part.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And for all the reasons cited, both in the article and in all my conversations with anyone who's asked me about this, I do believe that the position warrants higher compensation than it presently has. I don't feel as bad saying that, because I am leaving, but to be able to attract younger people like myself, so that hopefully someday I don't hold the record for the youngest Meridian City Councilman ever. But I think a fifty percent increase over two years, while I really appreciate the value that the committee has placed in the efforts that we put in, and while that very well may be commensurate with the work that we put in, still as a public service position, I feel like it should be lower than what the position really deserves. And I've put a lot of thought in the time since I had had that conversation with Patty, because I had kind of put the number out there of twelve to twelve-five, and I feel really comfortable with that number, maybe even over a tiered approach of moving it to twelve in twenty and twelve-five in twenty-twenty-one. But a thirty-five percent increase followed by another fifteen-hundred, I think is a little steep for the position at the moment. I don't want that to feel like I don't appreciate the effort you guys put in, because I really do. I wouldn't want to have to figure that out, because I can't be unbiased enough. I know that if I was on the committee, I'd be like, oh, they're elected officials, no raises. But the reality is to attract the kind of people that we want up here, it does take a little bit more, but not quite that much.
Well, I appreciate the citizens' committee every, every two years, coming here and hearing some of the same conversation. I think you have heard from the citizens. That's why we put the citizen committee together and to be thoughtful in the recommendation. The reason why the increase is coming back at the percentage it is, is because it's already an insanely low amount that any increase is going to seem big, and the council hasn't approved the increases in the past, so it gets bigger every two years, trying to make up for a workload that is really being accomplished by city council representatives, and you have to take yourselves out of these seats and think for those that will, will serve and help offset, and this certainly doesn't even come close to offsetting the time spent and the time invested in continuing to make Meridian a good place to live. You're elected to make some tough decisions. This is not one of the toughest decisions that you've been asked to make. You just have to take yourself out of it and look at it for future councils as well that will come. So I think it's time that the council salaries come into alignment, more so than they have been in the past.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
That was very well said, and with that, I will make the motion that we accept the recommendation from the compensation committee. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the compensation committee's recommendation in full. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Councilmember Roberts, I assume your motion includes that tiered approach?
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
I'm not opposed to the amount personally, but, Mayor, you said something that I think has really sat with me, is taking ourselves out of the seats, and for me, that's looking at it through the eyes of a taxpayer. And a five thousand dollar increase for a public servant, I think invites the opportunity for the public of which we serve to come and comment on this. So, well, I don't think that I'm opposed to the number. I am opposed to this tiered approach. I would, I won't be supporting this motion, not because I oppose the work of the committee, it's because I think it's incumbent upon us to invite the public to come in and comment on this.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Nary.
So mechanically, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we will have to bring an ordinance back with both those changes into the wages, both for the mayor and for the council positions for the next two years. Statutorily, it has to be done at least sixty days prior to the election, so it has to be done by about the end of August versus September. The opportunity for public input is certainly there with the ordinance, so that's an opportunity, if that's the council's desire, we can schedule, you know, the first hearing of it to be a public hearing, and then the second and third reading could be. be passed or amended as you direct. So, there is the opportunity if that's what you'd like. Since it is an ordinance, you can open that up for public comment.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
I support the idea of having a hearing on this and getting input from our citizens. I think we can go ahead and make the recommendation now to approve it with the public hearing before the ordinance.
Mr. Clerk, you call roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borden.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and we'll bring that back in ordinance form. And, Mr. Clerk, to list the first reading as a public hearing. Okay. And thank you again to our committee. Item 5B is under our legal department, and I will, I will turn this over to Ms. Neri.
Thank you, Madam Members of the council. I'd like to introduce Kevin West of the firm Parsons Bailey &amp; Latimer. The committee, the benefits committee and the benefits trustees met to discuss outside council and helping prepare the trust agreement for the self-funded trust, walking through the process with the Department of Insurance. Mr. West has a great deal of experience in this area. The committee was really impressed with him and his firm's ability to help us manage through this process. I asked Mr. West to come and help provide a little more information. We talked a few weeks ago about the trust and the trustee makeup and how that's done. And Mr. West can help explain a little again how the trust operates and functions and what the purpose of it is. We did get some information back from the Department of Insurance, basically saying they have not made a definitive position on the question about elected officials, but their response was we have not allowed any elected officials to this point. That's basically the best they would tell us, is that to this point, they have denied any requests by elected officials to be parts of benefits trust. But they weren't telling us that they were prohibiting it either. So, they've sort of left it on the fence. But I thought Mr. West could help understand a little bit about the process and how this works and what the, how the trust functions. And if he had any questions, he could answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Neri. Mr. West, welcome.
Well, it's an honor to, a rare honor for me to be in front of this group, so I appreciate this opportunity and hope I can be helpful. I don't know if it's best just to entertain questions or whether you want to hear anything more formal than that. Obviously, a self-funded health plan is, has become very popular in recent years. Many, not only government entities, but private companies are moving to this arrangement. There's Idaho law that governs the formation of a self-funded health plan with the trust and has numerous requirements. Title 41 of the Idaho code governs the formation, registration of a self-funded health trust and has requirements for the formation of that. I know I listened to your minutes of your last meeting. Bill was good enough to give me that heads up. So, I know Mr. Borden had questions about what are the duties and responsibilities of trustees. And I went through various sections of the code, and I just thought I would list those for you if that's helpful.
Thank you.
So, the responsibilities of trustees are to receive contributions for the trust, and these are contributions both from the city and from the employees themselves, to the extent that you require contributions from them. Secondly, to hold, manage, and invest trust assets according to the terms of the trust. Third, to make distributions from the trust for covered benefits of plan participants and for any trust expenses. Fourth, to be responsible for the trust's long-term financial stability. And that primarily involves maintaining sufficient reserves as established by a qualified actuary. And that's both a annual and, I believe, a quarterly process of determining that sufficient reserves exist. Fifth, to keep records and accounts of all trust transactions, trust board decisions. Sixth, to furnish employees with copies of the plan. Next, to ensure that various filings are made with the director of the Department of Insurance. And I think those are the main ones. And I should add that the trustees don't have to do all of these things personally. They can certainly delegate and get others to assist them in these different functions. But the ultimate responsibility as fiduciaries remains with, with the trustees, even though they may delegate some of these things to others. I know that you would have a third-party administrator who would be very involved in assisting the trustees with, with these functions. And so, I'd certainly entertain any questions. I will also add, I know there was discussion about city council members being trustees. And it's interesting that 10 years ago, another city, that I won't name, but another city in Idaho, asked my firm for a legal opinion on that. And our opinion was that it was not appropriate for a city council member to be a trustee. And that's, the code says that an employer shall not be a trustee. And so, the employer here is the city of Meridian. And while it's, it's not entirely clear, our feeling was that the city acts by and through its city council, and in effect, the city council is, in some sense, the employer. So, it was our opinion that both the sense and spirit of the statute was that city council members should not be trustees. We also felt that there was a potential for conflict of interest that might exist in terms of, you know, allocation of finances to the trust fund and as opposed to using city funds for other purposes. And that's maybe a bit of a stretch, but we felt that there could be potentially a conflict of interest as well. So, that was the opinion that we gave in 2010 to another city. The statute has not changed. It's not been interpreted, to my knowledge. And that was our opinion at the time. And it sounds like the Department of Insurance is having a hard time making up its mind on which way it's going to go. So, I think that reflects the fact that it's not crystal clear. But anyway, I would, I'd be happy to entertain any other questions.
Thank you. Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Mr. West, we also had some discussion regarding the number of trustees. Do you have an opinion on, I think the only thing we agreed on was an odd number is best, but 3, 5, 7?
Yes, I, I really think that's a matter of preference. I think having an odd number to break a tie is probably a good idea, although I understand from Mr. Neri and listening, you know, to the discussion that it's very rare that there's much of a dispute. But I still think having an odd number is a good idea. Whether, whether it's 3 or 5 or 7, I don't really have an opinion on. I think 5 is certainly an adequate number.
Any other questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Mr. West, appreciate you being here. Appreciate your expertise as well. Do you know how many municipalities in Idaho have a similar trust plan like what we're proposing in Meridian?
I don't. I, again, have worked with a major university in the state, a major city in the state, some major companies in the state, some of the largest employers in the state who have them. But I don't have like a statistic to give you.
Madam Mayor, I've been told that it's, it's not many. But, I mean, is, if someone were to say there are not many cities that do this in Idaho right now, is that a fair and accurate statement to make?
I don't know.
Okay. Madam Mayor, maybe one just one. If you read the minutes, I think you're well aware that I'm a, I'm a large supporter of having a council member on this. And when someone who's an expert like you brings up the issue of risk, that's something that perks my ears up. I'm keenly interested in that. And help me understand what, what risk would pose to the city by, by having somebody that's serving on the city council also being a member of this trust?
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure I said there was a risk. I said there was a potential, potential conflict of interest. Okay? You know, there may, there may be one interest in, in guarding city funds and using them and safeguarding, well, not safeguarding, but, but keeping them back for other purposes as opposed to devoting them to the trust. So, there, there could be some inherent conflict in that. That's, as we looked at this almost 10 years ago, that was a potential that we saw. And Idaho code says that trustees shall not have any conflict of interest or any appearance of such. So, you might say, well, that's a pretty small risk, Mr. West, and I might agree with you. But there is nevertheless that potential there.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you for joining us this afternoon.
All right.
It's not evening yet.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any further information needed from, I know Christina's here, Mr. Neri or Mr. West?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
It's listed as an action item. What's, what's the action that you or HR or city attorney are looking for?
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, I can answer this. So, what I wasn't sure of is if there was a necessity to take an action. What has already been directed previously was to begin the process of the application, which that's something between HR and myself and Mr. West, and we will get that information to them. The trustees that have proposed to move forward right now are four. The last discussion was 3 to 5. One of the suggestions at the last discussion was that, again, to take action is going to require a majority of the trustees. So, you're going to need a minimum of three. If you only have four, you're going to need a minimum of three people to take any action to move forward. So, you're not really going to have a tie because you, as with this board, if you had a tie, then it fails. So, I didn't know if there was any further action. I just wanted to make sure we recovered if the council wanted to direct anything else. We're beginning that process. If the council's desire is a council member apply to be a trustee, we'll submit that with the paperwork. And if that's, if the Department of Insurance approves it or denies it, that's up to the Department of Insurance. So, I think I just wanted to make sure you had enough information about how this worked and what the functions of the trustees really are and why, you know, they have in the past separated out elected officials from trustees for, for reasons that Department of Insurance now seems to be unsure of, but had been, up until we asked the question, had been fairly sure of. So, I didn't know if you needed to take action. I just wanted to make sure it was labeled properly in case there was a direction to do something.
So, because it has, there already has been action taken, there is not action necessary tonight?
It isn't required, no.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I do think, though, it's, if there are questions about, I guess, if this body, at least it's five members, that we should probably make some type of action about that. I would hate that there'd be any ambiguity from staff's perspective on, at least where council stands on this. I think specifically to having a council member on the trust board. To no one's surprise, it's my opinion that we should continue with the path of putting a council member on there unless the Department of Insurance says you can't. I think 5 is appropriate. I think that's where the conversation has been. I don't have any opposition to that. I think in terms of making sure that it continues to move forward, we should, if, because it's asked for action, and to Mr. Neri's points, I think we could at least comment in about where council is, so that way staff's aware as they move forward.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
I'm still comfortable and in agreement with the direction from our in-house council and now our out-of-house council that's framed it well, that the principles behind an employer's prohibition upon being a trustee apply in spirit, at least with an elected official. I think the remarks about the code's prohibition on an appearance of a conflict, as well as an actual conflict, prohibit an elected official being a trustee. I think the appearance of a conflict is clearly there, even if an actual conflict doesn't exist. And the, the direction from those two legal professionals with that code principle makes me believe that a council member should not be a trustee on this trust. I think that appearance of conflict will exist, can't be cured.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I lean towards agreeing. Left kind of with the only, leaving me uneasy about it was the acceleration in the process, but not to the point of not wanting to move forward. I'm confident in our staff's confidence in the acceleration, so not super bummed about it, but I'm fine with it because it trusts them.
So, unless anyone has anything in particular, we don't need anything specific on this item tonight, so.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Yes, it is something, you know, it is something we've discussed, we discussed a lot last time. It came up today, and Mr. West even pretty much confirmed that 5 is the magic number. So, I know he said 3 to 5 or whatever it was, but I, for one, feel comfortable with the number 5. And I think I heard Mr. Cavanagh say that he felt comfortable with the number 5. So, I don't know if we want to change that or just leave it. I'm not going to push too hard, but if anybody's with me.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if I can pose this question to Mr. Neri. If, if it's already in process, what does it take to add a fifth person? And is there a fifth person in mind, assuming we do not submit a council person?
So, Madam Members of the council, Councilmember Little Roberts, I think that was kind of the rationale between the 3 to 5. We have trusts that have operated with one. We don't recommend that. That person gets sent by a bus, you're kind of in trouble. The, the concern is if, if the requirement, it has to be 5, then nothing can happen if you can't get a fifth person or the fifth person retires or leaves the city, and we take this a couple of months, and you can't move forward because now you don't have a legally constituted board. And so, that's why many of our commissions say up to a certain number, so that way you have a minimum, but you don't have a maximum. So, that way you can still function when you don't have your maximum number. 5 is an ideal number. At the moment, the four people that have volunteered off of the benefits committee are the only four people on the benefits committee that were willing to do it. So, at the moment, we would be recruiting somebody who, to this point, has expressed no interest in wanting to be a part of the trustees. So, I'm not saying it's impossible. We certainly can't. I think part of our intent with the committee is to start getting some new members to the committee to educate them on how the process works, what the long-term goal is. That way, there is a good deep bench for when people separate or retire or whatever. So, at the moment, we just don't have a fifth person that has volunteered to do that. So, I would hate to stifle the whole process over one person. But again, we could craft the agreement to make sure it's clear that a minimum of three need to approve any action by the board in moving forward, and that it, there is an available position for a fifth. And again, as we work on this and get it up and running, we could help recruit that fifth person. Because I think ideally that would work. It's just that at the moment, we don't really have that, and I hate to stall everything for one, one position.
Thank you. Makes sense.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
That made a lot of sense, I guess. I then feel, I would feel comfortable knowing that the goal is to have five, to have that at least confirmation from the, from the committee members that we're, our goal is to have five. That way, if somebody does drop off, we still have four, you know, and then always try to keep it at five, but maybe not mandate it to be five for those reasons that we don't want to stall anything if, if somebody does leave. I have a question. Are, are all of the members employees on your compensation committee? Do you have any, is there? Do you have any, is there potential for any citizens to be on that committee, or does it need to be set up as only employees?
Historically, it has only been employees on the Benefits Committee. Again, we talked to whether entities, on whether a, a third party, or an outside consultant, or an outside member, and again, for the same sort of reasons, it, it didn't make a lot of sense to most other trusts of having people who have no stake in the outcome, no role in the benefits. Again, it's, part of it's that learning curve, part of it's the investment into a part of it. It, it is a Benefits Committee for the employees, and so it, it hasn't made sense to other people to have that. I'm not aware of any trusts that have non-employee members on the trust. And there's, again, I, maybe go back to Mr. Cavanagh's earlier question, there are a number of them in the state of Idaho, but generally, they are larger cities, larger employers. On the public sector side, it isn't very large, because we don't have a lot of large cities, or large employers. But there aren't any that I'm aware of that have non-members being on their boards.
Mr. Neri, can you then build in the, the requirement that, to move forward, anything regarding the trust, it would need to have the affirmative vote of three, that would help with the, the concern of the even, and no tiebreaker, and it will also help if you lose the fourth, or don't have all five, you will always have to have five or three people voting in favor.
Yes, ma'am. That, that can be crafted in the trust agreement.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
Can I booger it up just a little bit? Majority actually does the same thing, in the off-chance you one day have three commissioners, or three trustees, someday in the future.
And it has to be unanimous.
You still want that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Never mind.
Or is that if you keep it at five?
Yep. Won't booger it up.
Anything further on this item? Okay, moving on. Thank you so much. Item 6A is under Department Reports. We have in front of you our Public Works Director to talk to you about a budget amendment, seeking approval.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to, I think, present the last and final amendment of the year. I think we probably might have presented the first one back in October, but before you, hopefully in your information packet and memo, it was appropriately explanatory of what we're looking for, and that is additional spending authority to purchase MXUs and meters, which we in turn pass through, sell, and install to development community. And we vastly underestimated the growth that we were anticipating this year, and we now need that additional spending authority, and it's set, it's offset nearly dollar for dollar, for every extra meter we have to buy, we will turn around and, and sell and pass through. So I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, hearing no questions, I move that we approve the budget amendment for the amount of 4,064,147 for the purchase of additional water meters.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 6A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
All ayes, Mr. Kerry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening.
Okay, item seven is executive session. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
We go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74206, 1F, 1J, 1A, and 1B.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borden?
Aye.
All ayes.